Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the September 2018 East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees regular meeting. Ms. Beriantos, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Del Brazil.
Present.
Michael Feller.
Present.
Victor Garza.
Here.
James Moki.
Here.
John Massengill. Mr. Bryant, we have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, the Prayer and the Pledge, Mr. Toscano, please.
Mr. President, trustees, we have some staff and some students and a principal from Tradition Elementary School to get our meeting started this evening.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to open the meeting this evening with assistance from these lovely ladies who are the very first fifth grade class at Tradition Elementary.[54.48][54.48](APPLAUSE). We have with us Ms. Esmeralda Gonzalez, Karen Moxley, Riley Banks, and Zoe Woods.
Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I honor Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, indivisible.
Please bow your heads for the prayer. Father, there is so much to pray for our children as they grow up, and our prayer is that you will help parents and educators to provide them with a special nurture and loving atmosphere that will help them discover their gifts and talents and develop them for your glory.
We pray that you will surround our children with so much encouragement that no feelings of inadequacy, fear, or uncertainty will keep them from becoming the joyful, creative people you desire them to be.
We pray that you will make classrooms into places where there's delight in learning instead of judgery or dread. I pray for wisdom and discernment to reign in the hearts and both parents and teachers to safeguard the hearts and minds of our children. Amen.
You may be seated.
Thank you, girls. Also this evening, I'd like to pay tribute to our past as we close a chapter in the East Central history book. Thousands of children have walked the halls, learned in the classrooms, and played amongst the mighty oaks on the playground at John Glenn Elementary. And as we close that chapter, we will write the first page in a new chapter as we open the doors of Tradition Elementary. The last month has been a whirlwind of a transition, and I've never witnessed such energy, positivity, optimism, and teamwork as I have in the last few weeks from the staff and students and community. Getting into the building a week before school started was definitely a challenge, but none too great for the mighty Titan staff. The transition from John Glenn to Tradition brought a great mix of emotions for many who are deeply rooted here in EC. I myself, as well as others in this room, attended John Glenn as a student and hold it dear to my heart. I returned to teach there and continue to serve the community for the next 27 years on the same campus, so please indulge me as we pay tribute to John Glenn Elementary and begin to celebrate the amazing opportunities that lie ahead of us as we settle into this amazing new facility that we'll now call home.
Very good.
I'd like to invite the families of our students who are here with us this evening to stand, as well as any Tradition staff that have joined us and be recognized. Thank you for being here this evening.[543.16][543.16](APPLAUSE). On behalf of all of the Tradition staff, student body, and community, we thank you for providing us with this amazing place where we can learn and grow and work and play. It's fantastic. It's just an amazing start, and I'm so excited about what's to come. So you got a little sneak peek. We do invite everyone to the dedication ceremony on October 3rd at 6:00. Please come join us and see the rest of those amazing spaces. And I personally want to thank you for entrusting me with the responsibility to get this place in motion. It's been amazing. And to express our thanks, we have a sweet treat for each of you to savor and enjoy. And as you do, please know how sweet it is to be a part of the Tradition family and the East Central family.[592.41][592.41](APPLAUSE).
Calories. I love them.
(LAUGHING).
Can't wait to get in with it.
All right, well, ladies, thank you very much for starting our meeting off. I was able to visit with them a little bit before the meeting started, and I tell you that the energy amongst those four young ladies was just absolutely amazing. And I asked them about their school, and their face just lit up. They seemed to really enjoy what they're doing over there. Each one of them had a different part of the school that is their favorite, but it was just a joy to be able to talk with them for a couple of minutes and get their perspective on what that new facility looks like. I know that there were a lot of people in the room who had a big hand in getting into that facility. It was a challenge, but it was a challenge that was met pretty much district-wide, and everything got pulled off, thanks to a lot of effort and some great work by a lot of people. So we thank you for the work that you've done over the last couple of years to get that facility ready for your students. So, thank you very much.[720.00][720.00](APPLAUSE). It's always great for us to have students start our meeting. You've seen some exceptionally literate fifth graders today, and it's nice to see what y'all do for our kids. Parents, getting them to school, making sure that they do their work, teachers helping them, giving them opportunities to learn and to become the young ladies that they are now and they will be in the future. So thank all you for being here. Anybody else?
Absolutely.
Okay.[761.37][761.37](LAUGHING).
Mr. President, could I have a moment? I want to apologize to the superintendent, the board, the district, and especially District Four residents. I sit here representing them, and I can't do that if I'm not here. Last month at the Welcome Back, the superintendent laid all kinds of praise and accolades on us, and then I sat on my accolades and didn't come in the next night. I can't do my job if I'm not here, and it was just a, I guess it was a moment of old age. I just forgot. And I get sick, you know, I get migraines and all that. Those, they're excusable. The fact that I didn't come in when I'm supposed to, I can't help make the decisions that we're supposed to be making for the district, for the children, and for that I feel pretty badly. And I wanted to apologize. I don't think that we're forced to come in here every single month, but it is easier. Just like the students are supposed to be in class every single day so they can learn, I think it is incumbent on us to be here, to be able to help make the decisions that will make this district greater than it is already. And for that, I sincerely apologize.
All right. Okay. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, and after this agenda item, I promise we'll take a break, and those of you who need to go home and do homework or great homework will be able to get out of here. So give us a few more minutes. We have awards and recognitions. Please, Mr. Toscano.
So in light of all the construction and new facilities and all that's associated with that, getting ready to start the year, the EC family did have to come together to pull it off. And so tonight, we'd like to recognize a little bit bigger kids who had a big hand in ensuring that we were able to pull that off.
Good evening, President Bryant, Mr. Toscano, members of the board, and guests. Tonight, we have several groups who are being recognized for rolling up their sleeves and pitching in to help their EC family. As you may be aware, we had a few construction delays that led faculty members to not have as much time as we had planned on for them to move into their new classrooms. And that being the case, and this being East Central, student groups from the high school jumped in, rolled their sleeves up the weekend before school started, when a lot of other teenagers may have been picking the perfect outfit out to wear on the first day of school. We had three student groups that stepped and fetched on different campuses across the district to help make sure that our littlest learners walked into beautiful welcoming classrooms across the district. And so we thought that that was pretty special and just an outstanding example of what makes East Central so great. And whenever people describe East Central, you know, they always talk about that family feel, and that right there is a great example of why people feel like East Central is such a close family whenever it comes to our district. So, at this time, we'd like to call up the student representatives from Student Council, and these are just a couple of representatives from each group. The larger groups were out across the district, but we just asked for a few representatives. So tonight, representing Student Council is Braylin Barborca, Rebecca Benoy, and their sponsors, Mary Jo Johnson and Stephen Alvarado.[985.87][985.87](APPLAUSE). Next, we'd like to bring up our National Honor Society. That was another group that was out across the district helping. And we also have Braylin Barborca and Rebecca Benoy here to represent the National Honor We had several groups from athletics that were out across the land helping, but from athletics, we have the girls softball team, including one younger brother from Legacy who's here to represent the district athletics.[1076.42][1076.42](APPLAUSE). And that's Kayla Gonzalez, Maylin Ladios, Madeline Casanova, and Josiah Gonzalez, and their coaches, Shelley Hayes and Rebecca Halliburton.[1091.01][1091.01](LAUGHTER). Thank you.[1107.24][1107.24](APPLAUSE). If there are any family members or friends of these students in the audience, if you would please stand and be recognized as well. Awesome. Thank y'all so much.[1120.42][1120.42](APPLAUSE).
Okay. I don't know whether y'all have seen the back of some of the T-shirts, but the two young ladies who've been up here twice have on the back of their T-shirts, "We may have our differences, but we're family."
Oh.[1139.08][1139.08](LAUGHTER).
We're family. Thank you all. We're going to take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 7:00. Thank you. That's a little bit before the appointed time, but we'll get started, and that means we'll get out sooner. It's always a good thing. All right, we're going to move on. There were no, no one has signed up for public comments. We'll move on to Agenda Item Five. Item A is 2018-2019 District and Campus Improvement Plan.
Trustees, our district and campus improvement plans are complete and have been approved by the board, as is required by statute. Both of those plans are posted on each campus website, as well as the district website under Required Postings. We also keep binders in hard copy form in my office, in the office of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, which is Taffey-Hertz, as well as in the office of the Director of Federal Programs, which is Meredith Rokus, and also with our Chief Financial Officer, which is in Ms. Judy Burns's office. So they're available for viewing by the public, as well as obviously the Board of Trustees. So if anybody would like to enjoy that reading material, they're available, and we'll be happy to get that for you.
Okay. Item B, the 2018 State Accountability Reports.
Trustees, in your electronic packet, beginning on page nine, you'll see all of our accountability reports, and at this time, I'd like to call Jonathan Holbert up, who's our Director of Accountability and School Transformation. He's the sexiest job title in the district.[1245.01][1245.01](LAUGHTER).
Can I quote you on that?
You can quote me on that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to walk you through our state accountability. I'm going to give a brief overview of the systems. I know we talked about it last year as the system was developed for evaluation for this school year, but I'm just going to hit some highlights for you. So we do have a new, brand-new system. It uses three domains. The intent was to make the system easy to understand, which I think maybe was an ironic statement, but it's a very large manual with lots of intricacy to it, but I'll try to hit the highlights for you here. So the first domain is about student achievement. The second one is about school progress, and the third one is about closing the performance The first domain largely focuses in on STAR, as does the whole accountability system, and we talked last year about thinking about it like three hurdles, right? The first hurdle is the students that approach the grade level. The second hurdle is meeting the grade level, and the third hurdle is mastering the grade level. And it looks at each of these and looks at what percent of students, when you average all three of those together, achieve those levels on STAR. For the high school and the district, it also adds an element of college, career, and military ready and graduation rate. The second domain has two pieces to it. The first component is about academic growth, where it looks at STAR scores from the current year and the prior year, and it evaluates how much progress students are making. The second component is about relative performance, and you may recall this one from before. It really just takes your Domain One score and compares it to your socioeconomic status. And so they have a graphic that kind of shows how that might look. And when you look at our district, of all of our campuses, only one campus actually had their score improve because of socioeconomic status. Every other campus either stayed the same or was punished by not having enough students that were low socioeconomic. And so that was a little different than we were anticipating when we talked about the development of the system. The third domain looks at student groups to determine if you're closing the gap for kids, and so it looks at race and ethnicity groups. It looks at economically disadvantaged students, students that are in and were formerly in special education, and students that were in and formerly English-language learners, and then kids who were continuously enrolled in the district for three years, and kids that are newer to the district. And it takes six different pieces that it looks at, and so you'll notice a trend here. It looks at STAR meeting grade level, and then it looks differently at STAR approaches, meeting, and mastering grade level, because that's very different, because it wasn't already in the first one. And then it does STAR growth, graduation rate. TELPOS is an English-language learner test of English proficiency, and that was a late change in the system. They actually changed that at the end of July. They added that back into the system, and since our current-year TELPOS scores were not available, they had to use the 2017 scores. And so that was a little bit unexpected change in the system for us. And then finally, it looks at college, career, and military readiness. So overall, it takes those scores, and it takes the highest score from Domain One and those first, the two different pieces from Domain Two, and they count, the highest one counts 70% of your score, and then the third domain counts 30% of your score. And if you get a score of a 59 or lower, you're rated improvement required. And so they're trying to make it look like a letter grade, where the 90s are As, and the 80s are Bs, and the 70s are Cs, and the 60s are Bs, and then below that is an F. And our district gets an A-to-F rating this year, and in the future, next year, campuses will start getting A-to-F ratings also. And so I'm just going to hit some highlights for it. So we get a report that looks like this, where it shows our district overall scored a 70, which is a C. In student achievement, our overall score was a 69, which they rated a D. And then in school progress, we scored a 70, which was a C. And in closing the gaps, we scored a 70, which was a C. You can see here our high school ratings. They were rated a 72 overall, meeting the standard. And you'll notice that it doesn't have letter grades, like I said, for the campuses. And so it has each of the components, and if you look at the components, you can see where we really excel in college, career, ready, and graduation rates are above-average performance there. And you can see our score is 72 on school progress and a 70 on closing the gap. You'll see as we go into the middle schools that the report really starts to condense. You see less areas. So when looking at heritage here, you'll notice that the only component that gets measured for them really comes down to their STAR scores, and it slices and dices STAR scores through those domains different ways, the one exception being in Domain Three, every campus gets a TELPOS score. And so that English proficiency rating does show up. And you'll see here our legacy middle school ratings, and we'll talk a little bit more about those targeted improvement plans for any schools that were rated improvement required. And our intermediate campuses, our fourth and fifth grade, so they have basically the same components as our middle schools there, you'll notice. But the big change comes in when you go to our elementary schools. So our elementary schools here, you'll notice that they no longer get an academic growth score. And so on the school progress, that first component of the domain doesn't exist for them, because they don't have two different years of scores. They only have their current third-grader scores, and so they're really missing a big piece of the puzzle, and it's a real negative. I'll show you in a little bit kind of the implications for that piece being missing in the accountability system. And let's see, so we've got each of our five elementaries, and so John Glenn did receive a rating, right? And then now, of course, that'll be Tradition. Pecan Valley met the standard. And one of the things to remember is that Sinclair here is paired up with ECDC. So because ECDC doesn't get scores, you'll see here in two slides, this one here, oh, I'm sorry, this one here, that ECDC gets the same rating as one of the other campuses, and we chose Sinclair because many of the kids go to that campus. And so they don't get ratings individually, they just get Sinclair's rating overall. And I included BCLC's rating as well on there, showing that they didn't get a rating because so few students test there. The facility has such turnover and low population that they don't actually end up with a rating in any of the years. And so what questions do you guys have about those reports? Can I also share with you one more piece of information? So we did a little research into those improvement required campuses, and they have a little bit of jargon, so forgive me, I know we get very education-jargony, so they call it a high grade. So think about Salado and Oak Crest have a high grade of fifth grade. That just means that's the highest grade on the campus. And then there's campuses with a high grade of third grade, like our elementary campuses, where they don't go beyond third grade. And so in the state of Texas, there are 3,450 campuses that have a high grade of fourth and fifth grade, and there are 106 that have a high grade of third grade. And if you look at the number of campuses rated improvement required, 124 of those 3,450, or 3.6% of them, were rated improvement required. If you look at the campuses with a high grade of third grade, 14 of 106, which is a much higher rate you can see there. And if you come down a little bit, I'm sorry, the average score is nine points lower on the third domain. And then if you look at the number of campuses, there are 11 out of 3,000, and this has 10 out of 106. And so in other And so in other words, you're 30 times more likely to get no points in the third domain if you're an elementary campus with only a third grade. And because you're missing the growth score, you miss a lot of opportunity to get points in the system. You're kind of punished. And so we wrote an appeal of Harmony and Highland Forest improvement-required ratings. We talked to Sherri Hendrick over at Region 20, who helps advise the ATAC Committee on the creation of the system. And we showed her kind of what we saw in the numbers. And she thought we had a pretty strong appeal. And so I talked to the person who's in charge of the appeals at TEA. And she agreed that that growth component was such an important piece, that you're punishing these campuses by not having that component. And so we've turned in the paperwork. They've accepted that we've turned it in, and we won't find out until December. But those ratings for those two campuses are pending our appeal.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, yeah, back to the accountability system. TA was supposed to be working on accountability system during the school year, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What I'm understanding, TA didn't come up with accountability system till after August the 15th. Am I right? For this current school year?
Yeah, so this current year, they kind of, in January, February, March, they were kind of starting to piece together that system a little bit and kind of piece it together. And then I think I kept you guys updated with a couple of reports on what it might look like. And you can see a lot of the pieces. In July, they actually had a change of adding TELPOS into it. That was a huge change. And then even more than that, they then developed the plans for what we do in response to the system after August 15th.
Oh, right. That's what I'm asking you.
Yeah, so the consequences for being an improvement-required campus, they don't tell you anything about it till after August 15th. So our campuses are really proactive in their work. And so when you look at our three improvement-required campuses, they pulled together teams before we even knew what the system was to get real clear on the data and create plans. And they worked together. And it's really the hard work and dedication of our staff that caused them to be proactive, that they had the plans in place before they even announced what we needed to do, so that we could then look at what their changes to the system were. And we've incorporated all of it. Actually, yesterday, I went to training with two of those campuses at Region 20. So we were trained, and the requirement is that the training was for the development of the plan, which is my next thing I'm presenting, which has to be done this month with board approval. So I want you to think about that. To get board approval from yesterday to the end of the month, that's not a realistic timeline. Do you see the challenge there?
It's a big challenge. That's what I'm leading up to. How do the campuses meet this deadline?
Yes, sir.
I mean, schools after August the 15th. And I think that puts a lot of stress on our principals and our campus to come up with. Do they take that into consideration with schools starting and things like that? And you're asking these campuses to come up with this improvement plan. What, is a week and a half for a school start?
Yes, sir. It is a very aggressive, very difficult timeline. But I've asked the question. I actually, I asked our TEA representative on the phone about it and said, how? Because my understanding is that the legislature sets the rule and requires them to do those things. So I don't entirely blame TEA for it. But our legislature, from what they're telling me, requires them to. And so I asked him how he's going to talk back to the legislature about these undue burdens that they're putting on, because it goes to our principals and it goes to our teachers and it affects our campuses. And I don't think it's right. And so, but, 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 sir, I just want to reiterate. We have really good people and they're working super hard. And because of their dedication and their hard work and their collaboration, they overcome regardless of it. And Region 20 and TEA both praised their work in this area.
But why don't they give some type of suggestions? If they give them that short timeline of some resources to come up with this, it's such a short notice. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think that, like I said, if you think about what they're requiring, what they're saying is, you get trained, and then now you're going to go get a team and spend a whole day.
Is it reasonable?
No, sir.
Okay.
I do not think it's reasonable. It's, like, there is no way for, like, to meet the agenda for this board meeting. It had to be on it like, what, like a week ago or so? So how could they do that if they haven't even trained them on it? And so again, I'm just blessed that we have such great people, sir.
Well, I'm blessed we have great people too.
Thank you, sir. What other questions can I answer?
Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, sir. Item C, Personnel Report.
Trustees, this month's report is in your electronic packet on page 24. Very little activity. Had a couple of resignations, a couple of campuses. After the school year started, you'll see those have been replaced. And a couple of other positions that we had not yet filled have been filled since. So as always is the case, if you'd like any more additional information about any of the items in the personnel report for this month, I'd be happy to get that with you, get that to you.
Item D, Construction Update.
All right. It's that time again for our annual update from Mr. Selby on our construction program.
All right.
All right. Look at this, the right one. Nope. Thank you.
Did it now.
He of little faith. All right. As Mr. Toscano indicated, once again, for the dynamic presentation on construction. We'll start off with Tradition. I won't even try to compare a photographic presentation, as we just saw from Ms. Gorham and her staff. That was really well done. I mean that. But they have completed substantial completion. They are working on the punch list items, have begun some of the training. They still have a ways to go, because that punch list was fairly extensive. But they are making headway on that. They're, and moving forward. But we are in there. And once again, just praise the staff there and the entire district for coming together to get them in there. Farming Arts Center, this is a photograph from, I think, Tuesday. They are making progress there. The band renovations have been completed. And the punch list is not completely done, but they've made headway there. There's a possibility of a punch list by the 28th, but I wouldn't hold my breath. And we will be moving in whenever they complete that. Their schedule says the 8th. I would say it's more like the end of October myself. We continue to work with them and have serious conversations on a regular basis on the progress that they make or don't make. And we will be sharing more information with you as we get that together. The other projects, I'm really just going to give you an update on the schedule that they have for Salado. Just try to give you a little bit of an idea of where we came, where we've been and where we're going. This was the, these are the new additions that were added on either end of the north and south end of the gym, which is right here. This is renovations done to the old dressing rooms and band hall. And this is, so all of that was done as part of the project throughout last school year. And then that, along with the gym and Wing C, were done over the summer. They currently are renovating Wing A of the Salado campus. After they complete that, which will be completed by Christmas, they'll move into B and D and be working on that in the spring semester. And then by the end of May, they'll have that completed. And then they will complete the project at Salado with renovations to primarily the cafeteria, some minor things being done at the admin and library. And that's kind of a summary of that for you.
The portables that are on the field, what's going to happen to those?
I suspect some of those will be moving to Legacy and Heritage, because we're starting to hit capacity. And so they're still being used now. Two of the portables at Salado are being leased, so not all of those are ours. And there will be two at Con Valley after Christmas that are being leased, but those will go away. Now Harmony, once again, you have your projects going on. Last year, they built the addition, which is this area back up here. And then over the summer, they did renovations to what was the Kinder Wing, this area over in this section of the north part end of the campus, the cafeteria and the gym. They're currently working in this lower portion that you see the great little pointer showing you right now. And then after Christmas, they'll hop over to this area on the other side, to the more of the west side of the campus. They'll complete that during the spring semester. And then during the summer, they'll do the admin area and the library and the computer lab area. Con Valley, once again, you have the additions that were done over the school year. And then they had extensive renovations done to the admin area and portions of the classrooms here at the front of the campus and the center of the campus. Also, the caf, excuse me, the gymnasium was renovated during the summer. Right now, they're over in this kind of the southwest corner of the campus and working on that area. Whenever they're complete, they'll move over to this area, to the, in that area in the center. And then over the summer, they'll do the, this area up here and the cafeteria.
Library?
Library, yes. The library, these classrooms and the cafeteria. Be done in the summer. Then Sinclair, once again, you have the new addition that was done last year. Over the summer, you had this area that was completed, the cafeteria and the gym. They're currently working in this kind of southwest corner of the campus. Once they're completing that by Christmas, they'll move over to this area in the kind of the southeast corner of the campus. And then in the summer, they'll complete the library and admin areas, the main entrance.
Mr. Shelby, can you go back to Sinclair there?
Yes, sir.
You know, I've shared this with Mrs. Johnson also. Put a picture back there of the school.
Oh, the picture, sure.
And, you know, I'm getting complaints about chugholes. And I wasn't aware, we have another phase that's coming up next summer for the parking lot, am I right? It's a cracked sidewalk. I don't know, like, that's what I'm trying to find out. And it's chugholes all over the parking lot.
Over here?
And I think the sidewalk is cracked right in there somewhere. Can you help me out there, Ms. Johnson? Where the sidewalk is cracked?
Right at the entryway when you're walking in. From my understanding, within that front entryway, there, it's just a crack right as you're walking in.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it's a crack right there. Now, I've got, they're sending me pictures of it. And I just want to know, is that going to be corrected?
Yeah, we'll address those.
We'll address those. So I'll tell them we addressed those.
Actually, maintenance is working on that now. So you're talking about the crack at the main entrance?
Right, right.
Actually, I saw it last week. Yeah, you're talking about in the parking lot?
In the parking lot.
Okay. Are there potholes in the parking lot?
Potholes, right.
Some of those should be getting corrected. Some of those probably took place during the construction thing.
But that's what I'm thinking. So are they going to repair it?
Come in and look at that. I wasn't familiar with the crack in the front.
Okay, well, I think.
It's the covering, it's the coating in the entryway.
Ah, okay.
Coach's son. I think he should know about it.
Ah, okay.
So we'll look into those and we'll get those corrected. Either we either do that through maintenance or we'll go through the contractor one way or the other.
Yeah, okay, we can check it out there. Appreciate it.
Yep. We'll get an evaluation of it, get it to you, so you can tell your constituents exactly what the plan is. Sir.
All right. So that was, this is the summary of what I just went over as far as the phases. And then John Glenn, we have the construction documents were completed as of, actually, today. Should be going out by tomorrow or Monday at the latest. You have Joris, the general contractor, is going to be, I'm going to bring forward a proposal to, for board consideration. If you approve them having a change order and adding this to the scope of their current contract, they'll bid this out and bring a guaranteed maximum price for the work to be done over there at the board meeting in October. We'll begin the work in November and should be completed by June. And this, of course, is coming out of fund balance. And then ECDC, we'll start looking at that in more detail. But right now, we're focusing on the other projects.
So we're still doing John Glenn's plan, right, from what was initially discussed?
Yes, so the scope of work that's going to be looked at there is the demolition of the two northern modules. We're going to be doing some landscaping where those were. And then a parking lot will be added over towards the back of that complex. The gymnasium will be converted into a shop class, general-purpose shop class. And then ADA issues will be addressed in the main campus and very possibly painting the interior and then some technology or AV improvements. That's generally the scope of it. There's some other things we're going to be looking at doing. We're going to have those as add alternates to see if those are something we can afford. If we can, we will. If we can't, then that's why they're add alternates, we'll choose not to take them.
And the parking lot in the back is for the?
It's for the overflow parking and also would be able to be used by the band for practice, yes.
And we'll also be using the cafeteria as another cafeteria, fully functional cafeteria for high school food service.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Selby? All right. Our next item is upcoming events.
On your September and October calendar, a couple of items I'd like to point out. Tomorrow night is homecoming. The football team will be taking on Sand Market. Expect a really big crowd there tomorrow evening at the Hornets Stadium. In, at the end of September, 28th, 29th, and 30th is this year's Tasby Convention in Austin. All of the registration has been taken care of, as well as all of the arrangements for those of you that will be attending. You've all got a vanilla folder in your packet that has all the details, including itineraries, schedules of events, as well as board events, with timelines, directions, attire, and all of the details that you normally expect for this event. If you need any additional information after you have a chance to look through it, please give me a call and we'll get those details squared away for you. In October, as Ms. Gorham mentioned earlier, on the 3rd of October, we will have the dedication ceremony, beginning at 6:00 PM at Tradition Elementary. Please mark your calendars. It'll be a really special evening for the community. School will be closed on both the 8th for Columbus Day, as well as on the 22nd. School will be closed for students, but it is a staff planning day. Our next regular scheduled board meeting is on the 18th of October. There's an error I just noticed on the time. That is not a 5:30 start. It is a 6:30 start. So please make that change on the 18th. It's just a regular 6:30 start board meeting. And then early voting begins on the 22nd, runs through the 31st of October. We do know and have confirmed that the boardroom is an early voting site, as well as the Schaefer Library on Highway 87. And then the regular election will be a site at the Stan Bonowitz Center at the high school, I believe at Harmony and Pecan Valley. Is that correct? Okay. And the Schaefer Library. Those are all polling sites on Election Day. Early voting, again, in our district. Early voting, again, in our district will be at the Schaefer Library and here in the boardroom.
Seven to seven?
Seven to seven, yes.
It's not a polling site at Sinclair on Election Day? Is at the Schaefer?
Yeah. And those are the ca- and the county sets that.
Oh, the county sets that.
Yes, sir.
Is that Schaefer? Thank you for that information.
That's all I have.
All right, sir. All right. Move on to item six A, approval of Harmony Elementary School Targeted Improvement Plan.
Mr. President, for the next couple of action agenda items, I'd like to call again Mr. Jonathan Holbert back to the podium to give the board an overview of the improvement plan for a couple of campuses, but starting with Harmony Elementary School. And then your electronic packet, Harmony's plan is located on page twenty eight and page twenty nine, if you'd like to follow along.
Give a brief overview of the process first. Oh, I'm noticing that's not projecting. What did I do? There we go. Awesome. Okay, so for a couple of years, we've talked about how going through that process for improvement required. We, we learned a great deal about how to look at the data and how to get really structured and targeted. And we call that the CCG process and we ask every campus to go through it. It's part of our, kind of being a little bit more proactive approach where we ask campuses to engage in that regardless of what TEA tells us, just because we wanna have the very best plans and have the very best work, taking that next step regardless of wherever we are. And so every campus really engages in the work, but if, if you are rated improvement required, then you're, you're required to submit that report to the state and engage in that work. And so just to hit some highlights for you, it's a team of teachers, campus administrators, district administrator. And then to get a little jargon-y, they call it a professional service provider. That's somebody that the state sanctions to do that work, who's an expert in the process, who's done a lot of work in school improvement and really can, can kind of guide us. So when you look at the plan, that person has looked at it with us to make sure that we have the right jargon and we're using the right, the right data sources that will make, satisfy the requirements of TEA so that it'll be approved. And so we try to make sure that we're doing great things that are gonna make a great impact, but also making sure that these targeted improvement plans fit the template correctly so that TEA is satisfied and that they understand that we're doing that great work, if that makes sense. And so they really start with the data and they spend about eight hours. It's a full day experience for these campuses. And they do that over the summer. And so we're talking about teachers volunteering their time because they love the campus and wanna, wanna cause improvement. And they, they select what the state refers to as a problem statement. We refer to it as a growth opportunity. And so we say, wherever you are, you have an opportunity to grow. And then you dig down deep and that can be hard work, identifying what's really at the root of that issue. And from there, they set some, some metrics. They have an annual goal. And then they, they identify some short-term actions like training. And then they identify some longer-term actions like what might look, what might be going on in the classroom, where you're implementing these ideas. And then long-term actions where you might be looking at impact on students. And then they create timelines, say who's responsible and how you're gonna measure these things. Because we wanna have some great leading indicators saying, are we on track to meet the goal? And so we had some, some really great success stories like Kristen over at Pecan Valley last year where along the way, she's looking at the plan and saying, hey, this is how we're doing. And sometimes not everything worked like we thought it would and we have to make those adjustments. And so it's, it's really a lot more powerful when you're adjusting along the way than when you get to the end and you say, oh man, we didn't, we didn't meet, we didn't meet our, our target. And so kind of based on, on that process, we've got Harmony, Harmony's plan there in your packet. And if there's any questions you have about what Harmony has, I'd love to answer them for you.
I think we're good.
Mr. President, trustees, I recommend board approval of Harmony Elementary's school target, targeted improvement plan as presented by Mr. Holb.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the Harmony Elementary School Targeted Improvement Plan as presented. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, approval of Highland Forest Elementary School Targeted Improvement Plan.
Trustees, this particular plan will be on page thirty one and thirty two in your electronic packet. Mr. Holbert, any comments about that?
I just wanted to reiterate that they're going through that same process. We have a different professional service provider within this year, Dr. Sylvia Reyna, who came highly recommended to us. She's worked with PV the last couple of years. And she served as associate superintendent in Dallas and Fort Worth ISD's overseeing school improvement. And so she's a real smart lady who brings a lot to the table and we're, we're really excited to be working with her over at Highland Forest with Irma Jean and that crew.
Trustees, oh, I'm sorry.
All right, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Trustees, I recommend board approval of Highland Forest Elementary School Targeted Improvement Plan as in presented in your packet.
Have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the Highland Forest Elementary School Targeted Improvement Plan as presented. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Fellers. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. Any questions? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of Legacy Middle School Targeted Improvement Plan.
Trustees, as you're aware, this particular plan is located in your electronic packet as well. It's on page thirty four through page thirty six. And Mr. Holbert would be very happy to answer any questions you might have about Legacy Middle Schools Improvement Plan.
I have a question compared to last year's and this year's. I noticed there were some notes on these compared to the others on the next steps. Can you discuss that?
Absolutely. It's, so what's different on Legacy's plan? If you look over on the right, on the results, status and next steps, it's a little different than anything you've seen before. This is something that we, we asked TEA about before we submitted it, but Nicole is really proactive. And so I'm actually on her leadership team and every week, they go through the plan and they say, where are we at? How are we doing? Are things working as intended? And they're making adjustments. And then they're saying, what's coming up next and what do we need to do to make sure that we're hitting the metrics so that we don't get behind, but that we're constantly ahead and really, really doing the very best possible. And so we asked about it because that's a little unusual compared to prior years. So thank you for, for asking about that because it's just, it's something that they said this is, reflects a high level of implementation. And they said, please, don't take those types of things off of the report. And so I wanted to just make sure that lived on and that, that's why you see those extra things. Thank you.
Very good.
Any other questions? All right.
Mr. President, trustees, I recommend board approval of Legacy Middle Schools Targeted Improvement Plan as presented in your packet.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the targeted improvement plan for Legacy Middle School. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Fellers. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Berrientos. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It, it seems like we've gone through those pretty quick, but we've had this stuff for a week. There've been some questions asked prior to the meeting, so don't think that we've given the short shrift after the work that was done on them. We appreciate everything that y'all have done on those improvement plans. It's really, really good work. Well, thank you for that. Item D, resolution of board approved credit by examination audit process.
Yes, sir. Trustees, this is the result of the State Board of Education revising some rules on credit by exam. So just to give you a little background, credit by exam is, is a process that districts would use to identify students who may be performing above grade level. So you might see kids promoted or advanced as a result of this work in the district to identify these students. You would also see students particularly at the high school who actually earn credit for courses by testing out, by, by examination. And so the new rules require the board to pass a resolution that is essentially saying that the board is going to assure that any assessment we use to make those decisions are aligned to state level standards and that the district has a process for auditing those assessments to make sure that that is the case. And so just to let the board know what we've traditionally done is for grades one through twelve, we use assessments designed by the University of Texas and/or the University of Texas Tech for our credit by exam assessments. And in the resolution, it states that the board is accepting their audit process. So they have an audit process for both of those universities' credit by exams to ensure that they align to grade, grade level standards. So it meets the, the criteria expected by the State Board of Ed. And we intend to continue using those. They've worked well for us. Kindergarten is not really required to use anything for acceleration, obviously they're little babies. But we do see some children from time to time who are performing above grade level. It's very rare. But we do have a process for doing that and we, we use the same assessments that we would use to identify children for gifted and talented. It's called the ITBS. As a result of this resolution, we will ensure that a district level committee reviews those assessments annually to ensure that they do meet kindergarten standards, to verify that if a child performs that or above that, that they're actually performing at or above where children at that age level should be performing. Again, that would have then aligned us to this requirement by the State Board of Ed. And then lastly, it also mentions in the resolution that if stu- if districts were gonna use a district-created assessment for credit by exam or acceleration purposes, that there has to be a committee that audits that. We've included that in the resolution. We don't currently use district and haven't ever actually used district-level assessments for that purpose. But should the district choose to do that in the future by resolution that you'll consider tonight, it will require district, a district staff to review and audit and evaluate that assessment to assure that it is at grade level standards. And so I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have about that. Ms. Hertz, am I missing anything? Oh, that's even better than well done.
What criteria are we using just for a kid to test out, you know, if you want to test out a weight? Also, when a kid tests it out of a particular subject, what does he do for the rest of the time?
So he just gets put in the next level course.
Yes, okay.
Yes, sir. So they can request themselves to do that, or it could be a parent request. Or we could have a staff member say, hey, that James Mulkey, he's, he's pretty sharp. We might wanna test him. If him and his family are okay with it, we'll do that. Is that also correct?
Very good.
Perfect. I was waiting for it.
Okay, is there any other questions? All right.
All right, trustees, I recommend board approval of the resolution of board-approved credit by examination audit, of the board-approved credit by examination audit process as presented.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent for the board to approve the resolution, resolution of board-approved credit by examination audit process. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consider and take possible action to contract with Beyond Speech and Sound.
Mr. President, trustees, this particular item speaks to services for children who require speech therapy. We have staff, speech, speech pathologists to be specific, who provide that therapy for our students who need such services. We currently have a position open. They're very difficult to find, hard to fill positions, but we have children who are requiring that, that therapy as we speak. So as a result, we have been able to, to negotiate a per hour rate for a, for the service to be provided by a company called Beyond Speech and Sound. That rate is fifty-nine dollars an hour. It's a little bit below market rate. We were, we were pretty effective at reasonable negotiation. They, with your approval, will be providing that speech therapy service in the interim while we continue to search for a speech pathologist to hire on full-time. The reason why we gotta bring that to you tonight is, is for some reason, we don't find a speech pathologist. When we project out over the course of the year what this rate per hour and the amount of services that we'll be providing for students, it would exceed the state-required fifty thousand dollar threshold for board approval. And so in the event that we're not able to secure a speech pathologist, we'd like your consideration and possible approval for this service to be continually provided for the course of the year. Should we find a speech pathologist before the year's end, the contract has its, the agreement rather, with Beyond Speech and Sound and it allows us to get out of that agreement within thirty days' notice. And then will allow us to then bring on our full-time employee who would then take over the responsibilities for that service. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have. And Ms. Pugh, am I missing anything? It's great.
So we'll have a...
Thank you.
We'll have a facilitator coming from there?
Yes, sir. We will have a speech pathologist come in to, to, to provide the service i- in our schools, am I correct? At, oh, this is specifically at Oak Crest. Okay, thank you.
Say it again?
At Oak Crest. We're providing the service at Oak Crest. We have students at other campuses who are also receiving the services, but we have... Yeah, we have, we have a speech, we have a speech pathologist providing that service. We're just shorthanded, filling this particular position. It's not the only person providing that service. Yes, sir. Good question.
Does this contract specify a designated number of hours per month?
It, they are...
Okay, just whatever.
I'm sorry? Normal, as far as the number of hours that we'll, that they are allowed to provide service, which is actually specified in our documentation, correct?
Okay, so if, if we hire somebody and we can, we can terminate the contract thirty days later, but during that thirty days, we really don't have to have them come out and we don't owe them anything. Okay, cool. All right, any other questions?
Okay. Mr. President, I recommend board consideration to contract with Beyond Speech and Sound for speech therapy services for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the school year at a rate of fifty-nine dollars per hour as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the contract with Beyond Speech and Sound. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item F, consider and take possible action to approve a change order to the district's current construction manager-at-risk agreement with Joris General Contractors to add additional scope.
Trustees, as Mr. Selby indicated earlier, the district would like for your consideration this evening for us to contract with Joris General Contractors as an add-on to their CM-at-risk contract to complete the renovations at John Glenn Elementary. We believe that that gives us a, potentially gives us a quality general contractor who generally does much bigger projects. Standalone, this project's much smaller and is less likely to garner the attention of a really big general contractor like Joris. Of course, they're in the middle of work with us, so they're mobilized and they're doing exceptional work as part of the team at this particular time. We also consulted our attorney who verified that this additional scope to the Joris contract is permissible because it does not exceed legal limits on change orders by the local, the Texas Local Government Code, which limits change orders to twenty-five percent in, in aggregate of the amount of the underlying contract. The underlying contract's forty-seven million. This particular scope is in the neighborhood of two point four million, so it doesn't even come close. That'd be a little more than ten million dollars to breach that, that requirement, that threshold. So at this time, if Mr. Selby would like to add anything, that was a very general overview. And also answer any questions the board might have.
If you'd like to answer any questions, which is kind of unusual, did an outstanding job.
Outstanding. Outstanding.
It was quite perfect. Sorry. It was great. It's good. Had a good time also for Joris. They have another, they have a team that's coming off of another project in between jobs that can help oversee that project. Also, as I mentioned, we're going to have some add alternates. The amount may be more than that two-point-four million, but we'll look at what's the best value for the district and bring those to you with some recommendations.
So, does this work include some of the things we talked about relating to student traffic back and forth across the street?
It will. Ultimately, we'll, we have trying to set up meetings with Tech Stock right now. We're looking at a system in which whenever we wander, obviously before school and after school, you'll have a crossing police that will help with crossing. But during the day, there will be a system where as a kid gets ready to cross and push the button, lights start flashing that notify drivers that somebody needs to pass and that they have to stop. And then they cross, and then the flashers will go off. Those work off of a solar system, so there's probably a little, I'll have to run out to it, but that's what we have.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that this included that design that y'all showed us a few months ago about how you're going to move traffic around the existing high school campus over to the new annex, and it didn't, and it wasn't just limited to the work at that annex. So this is included in that.
It'll also include additional sidewalk and cross striding so that coming from the learning academy or the north campus, rather, then they have a logical location to cross in the same way with the main campus and the high school, identify a logical location for them to cross and would lose.
Yeah, that was part of the plan that y'all showed us a few months ago, but at that point, it was kind of tentative, and I wanted to make sure we were still moving forward with that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
Trustees, I recommend board approval to approve a change order to the district's current construction manager-at-risk contract with Joris General Contractors to add the annex renovations project at John Glenn Elementary to the contract for the Joris scope and bring Joris guaranteed maximum price proposal back to the board for approval at a subsequent meeting.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve a change order for the district's current construction manager-at-risk agreement with Joris. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Fellers, or second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item G, construction project delivery contract award method, asbestos abatement at Pecan Valley Elementary, Salado Intermediate, Harmony Elementary, John Glenn Elementary, and Sinclair Elementary.
Mr. President, trustees, these, of course, are all the campuses that are in the additional phases of renovation, as Mr. Selby pointed out earlier this evening. Per board policy, CV local, any construction project that we intend to advertise for is likely to exceed fifty thousand dollars requires board approval. The staff is recommending that the construction project and delivery contract award method of competitive seals proposals, sealed proposals, is utilized to secure a contract for the asbestos abatement at Pecan Valley, Salado, Harmony, John Glenn, and Sinclair.
Anybody have any question about this item? Answer?
All right. Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the construction project delivery contract award method utilizing competitive sealed proposals and securing a contract for asbestos abatement projects as presented.
Have a recommendation to, from the superintendent to accept the asbestos abatement construction delivery contract award method. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Fellers, or second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item H, resolution regarding extracurricular status of 4-H organization.
Trustees, we bring this to you each and every year, and what this essentially is, is a resolution for your consideration, and the resolution is in your electronic packet on page forty-seven, to approve the Bear County 4-H as an acceptable East Central ISD school activity. They specifically call it extracurricular, but we're essentially saying that it's something that our kids can participate in as a school-related activity. That's one thing you're considering. The other, the second thing you're considering is that staff that they identify who have the appropriate credentials to lead as, to lead those activities endorsed by 4-H, who have the appropriate training, again, the appropriate credentials, to be approved as adjunct educators of East Central ISD. And then, thirdly, what you're approving is that for students who are participating in those, given that with approval, there'll be East Central ISD school-related activities and that the instructors providing that instruction are adjunct East Central ISD instructors, then the students will get excused absences at school-related activities. Just as a kid who leaves, who misses school for a basketball game, these students would miss school for an accepted, acknowledged 4-H activity. And this, again, is something we bring to you each and every year, and it requires board approval for students to be given an excuse, school-related absence for these, participating in these. There is also regulations and policy for the number of days that they can miss, and I believe it's up to ten, and that's been the case for quite a while. So we'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have. You'll find in that resolution that they are identifying by name those instructors that they're endorsing as adjuncts, and what exactly is the activity that they instruct, as well as the events that the 4-H endorses that our students may participate in. Those actual events and the dates. So you'll know exactly what events and who will be instructing students in those events that will actually qualify for this attendance exemption, if you will. Okay?
These kids are in 4-H program. Follow, same rules, the U I L rules eligibility falls in place also, am I right?
We do, locally. I don't know that it's required by 4-H. Actually, I do think it is now required, right? It is required. Yes, sir.
And what happens if a kid is not eligible during that particular time? They're not, but they're still in the H program, am I right?
They're in the program, but they cannot miss school and participate and compete. It's like an athlete. They still got to go to practice, and they're still in the program, but they can't perform. Thanks for the clarification, Ms. Johnston. I appreciate that active engagement.
Mr. President, I think I addressed this a couple of years ago. I think there's, you was in a form letter. Somebody needs to prove this stuff. Item two, second paragraph. Resolution, R E S O U L, T I O N, no. R E S O L I, T I O N, no. Finally, resolution, R E S O L U, T I O N, okay. But somebody needs to prove this stuff. If we're signing this thing, we're approving this thing, and their spelling is atrocious. I'm sorry.
Mr. Garza, duly noted, we'll get with the A and M system.
Must be the A and M system.
And ensure that they correct and edit those documents.
And it's down here where it's highlighted, the resolution. I guess you put a lot of soul into it, I guess. I, I don't know. Don't knock it, but somebody needs to prove this thing. If Ms. Arvanta's going to sign this thing, she better start reading these things because that's her name on it, and I'm holding her responsible.
Sir, we'll definitely follow up on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
See, I do pay attention.
All right. Mr. President, trustees, I recommend board approval that the Bear County 4-H be approved as an extracurricular activity for purposes of youth participation in projects, events, and activities, and that the Bear County Extension Director or his designee, who meet all necessary criteria, be recognized as adjunct staff members, and that students participating in 4-H educational activities be counted in attendance for foundation school program purposes.
All right. We have a recommendation from the superintendent that with the exception of the duly noted flaws in the document, we approve the document as presented. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Fellers, or second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item I, cancellation of November sixth, two thousand eighteen trustee election, single-member districts one and seven.
Trustees, during the signup period for the position of trustees for District One and Seven, only one candidate applied for a position on the ballot for both of those districts. For single-member District One, we had Mr. Steve Bryant apply for a place on the ballot, and for single-member District Seven, we had Ms. Del Brazil. Therefore, each of those candidates are unopposed. As permitted by the Texas Election Code, the Board of Trustees may cancel the election provided that the candidates were unopposed, which we have verified that they were unopposed. So what you'd be approving tonight, then, is a certificate of unopposed candidates, effectively then allowing the board to exercise its option to cancel the trustee election for the single-member districts one and seven.
Anyone have any questions?
Trustees, I recommend board approval of the attached order of cancellation. It would cancel the November sixth, two thousand eighteen trustee election for single-member districts one and seven.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent, cancel the November sixth, two thousand eighteen trustee election for single-member districts one and seven. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Fellers, or second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. Any questions? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have an item pulled from the consent agenda? If not, chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Fellers. The consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. Glad I didn't have to spell any of that.
I would have been watching.
All right. Before we move on to item A, adjournment, Mr. Toscano, do you have anything else for us?
Actually, I do have something really briefly in your packet as well. There's two documents that I put together for you guys, one of which is just, it's bright yellow, and it's just a brief summary of our community-based accountability system. Of course, you guys are aware you adopted the first three pillars, but the committee has since convened two times this fall, and we have drafts of three more pillars. So there's a pillar function for each of those three additional pillars. And as you know, this is much more robust, much more comprehensive, and much more rigorous in terms of accountability goes, and even better, it's much more aligned to our community values and expectations. So I put it on one page just for your talking points in reference and for you to ask any questions of me between now and next month about that, if you're so moved. And the other document has a little table at the top, a little color-coded table, and that's just a one-page document. When we look at our district and campus improvement plans, they're enormous. This just extracts the high points for you to take a look at. We, as a district, are focusing on three systems. We're really attacking improvement, as we always have, as a systemic thing. We want things to be sustainable and long-term and live well past any of us. But you'll also see some very specific and strategic resource allocations that we've extracted from those plans, specifically the additional support we're providing campuses, the additional staffing, the additional coaching, the additional expertise. And so, you'll see there a summary of those really, really briefly, and you'll see that the campuses that are in need of a little more support are getting more support. So as you take a look at that between now and the next time we convene, if you have any questions, would like additional information, I'd be more than happy to discuss those with you. They're all familiar to you. It's just I know we flood you guys with tons of information, so I wanted you to have a white paper, if you will. So it's at your disposal. You have that information, the high points consolidated.
Anybody needs anything about that? Let Mr. Toscano know. And Ms. Ots, thank you for my note. I appreciate that. Those of you who don't know, I'm color-challenged. So on the top of my yellow sheet, it says "yellow." All right. With that having been said, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Fellers. We are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.